Good evening. School Board members, CCPS families, students, staff, and the Caroline community. I Sean Kelly, Chair of the Board, would like to call the January School Board meeting to order. It is my privilege to welcome those attending in person at Caroline Middle School as well as those viewing on our CCPS YouTube channel. Each provides an avenue for you to receive information, heightened education, awareness, and involvement. The School Board is grateful for your attendance as we continue to move our school division in a forward direction as hashtag one Caroline. Again, welcome to School Board meeting, and now I would like to ask the Clerk of the Board to call the roll. Ms. Stevens?
Ava Milliken, Student School Board Representative, Dr. Michael Hubbard, representing the Bowling Green District, Mr. Calvin Taylor, representing the Port Royal District, Mr. Sean Kettley, representing the Madison District, Dr. Sarah Calverick, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jawanda Rollins Vels, representing the Reedy Church District, Mr. Lydell Fortune, representing the Matapena District, and Mrs. Allison Sears, representing the Western Caroline District. And I am Lisa Stevens, Clerk of the Board. Mr. Chair, and we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens. At this time, we'll move on to item D with the Pledge of Allegiance from the students of Madison Elementary School, followed with words of inspiration with Mr. Taylor. Would the students from Madison Elementary School please come up on stage and lead us with the pledge?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That was an excellent yard. And now for words of inspiration, I'd like to say good evening and thank you for being present tonight. Before we begin our meeting, I would like to offer some words of inspiration. As quoted by Edward Hale, "Together" is one of the most inspiring words in the English language. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Together, families are stronger. Together, sports teams are victorious. Together, friendships are strengthened. And together is better when unity is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and thank you again to the students of Madison Elementary School for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, the Board Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the School Board presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Motion passes, and we have an agenda. At this time, we will take part in our annual reorganization, and I will hand the gavel over to the Superintendent, Dr. Calverick.
Thank you, Chair Kelly. First, before I begin, I do want to extend my gratitude to Chair Kelly for the service that he has provided to Caroline County Public Schools over the last 12 months as Chair of CCPS School Board. Today's meeting is focused on the reorganization of the School Board. Pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 22.1-72, the Board is required to establish a meeting schedule for the coming year. And Section 22.1-76 mandates that the Board organize or reorganize annually with the election of officers at this first meeting in January. This reorganization includes the selection of the Chair, Vice Chair, approval of the Clerk, Deputy Clerk, superintendents designated to attend meetings in the absence of the superintendent, student school board representative position, approval of the meeting schedule for this calendar year, and confirmation of the School Board and Clerk Code of Ethics. As superintendent, I will preside at the selection of the Chair and then transfer the gavel ceremoniously to the new elected Chair. The Chair has multiple responsibilities for which the Vice Chair will fill in as needed. Some of these responsibilities are as follow. Presides at regular meetings, special call meetings, workshops, joint meetings with the Board of Supervisors, and School Board closed session meetings. Facilitates and moderates discussion among Board members seeking consensus as appropriate using Robert's Rules of Order. Prepares Board Committee assignments. Communicates regularly with other Board members, keeping them informed of school matters. Maintains ongoing contact with the Superintendent on relevant school matters. Prepares Board agendas with the Superintendent. Takes the lead on contract negotiation, evaluation, and goal setting with the Superintendent. Takes the lead on developing priorities for School Board Annual Goal Setting and Board Professional Development. Prepares and delivers, in conjunction with Vice Chair and the Superintendent, the approved School Board Budget Presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Signs contracts, official minutes, and resolutions approved by the Board. And approves Board Member Local Travel Reimbursements online and signs Board Member Expense Reimbursement Vouchers. Any takers in the audience? That's a long list of responsibilities. These activities and duties require considerable time and dedication by both the Chair and Vice Chair. This list is not all-inclusive, but certainly does provide some idea of what is entailed with the duties and responsibilities of the Chair and ultimately the Vice Chair if needed. These leadership positions are critical to the effectiveness of the Board. And now we will proceed with the selection process. Board members, I will begin with opening the floor for nominations for Chair of the Caroline County School Board for the 2025 calendar year.
Dr. Calverick, I would like to nominate Calvin Taylor.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close nominations for Chair?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the first nominee, Mr. Calvin Taylor. May I have a vote, please?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
At this moment, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to congratulate our newly elected Chair, Mr. Calvin Taylor, who represents the Port Royal District, and pass on the gavel as a symbol of the duties and responsibilities that accompany this position. Our fellow Board members pledge their support to you as Chair as we move forward. We look forward to working with you in anticipation of the leadership that you will provide to this Board. The newly elected Chair is now invited to continue with the reorganization of the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Calverick. I would just like to take one minute to say thank you to my fellow Board members for showing that kind of support and allowing me to serve as your Chair. And I would also like to say that I really feel good and honored to be given this opportunity to serve. I'm a local-born Caroline County person. I've lived here all of my life. I went to school here, and I graduated, and I came back, and the county allowed me to teach, and they allowed me to serve as Assistant Principal in this very building. I served 33 years as an educator in Caroline County, and then to be able to come back and serve on the School Board and to be Chair of the School Board, I'm just really, really honored. There are so many people that could have done that and maybe even better, but the fact that I was allowed to do that, or the citizens of this county and the members of this Board showed that kind of faith in me, I am just very, very humbled and very honored. And I assure you that I will do whatever I can along with this Board to make sure that the students of Caroline County continue to get the best quality education that we can give them, that the parents of this county will be proud to say that my child is a student in Caroline County, and that those people who are employed by Caroline County hopefully will be able to say, "I work for a school system that cares about me," and they are going to do the best that they can to make me be successful. I pledge that to you tonight, and I thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Having said that, I will open the nomination for Vice Chair. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair this time?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Lydell Fortune for our Vice Chair position.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we nominate Mr. Fortune, Mr. Lionel Fortune, for Vice Chair. Are there other nominations? Are there other nominations? Are there other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I will close the nomination for Vice Chair and ask for a motion from the Board.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved and properly second that we elect Mr. Lionel Fortune as the Vice Chair of Caroline County School Board. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye, or do I have to call individually?
We'll call for the vote.
Oh, we'll call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. I just knew nobody was going to go against that, so I was just trying to do it fast. Okay. Moving right along, the, we are now... Okay, okay. 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 They make you look good, don't they? Okay, the Superintendent recommends for the Clerk of the Board?
Chair Taylor, I recommend Ms. Lisa Stevens as Clerk of the Board.
Okay. Is there a second?
I've moved for approval of Lisa Stevens as Board Clerk.
Second.
I'm sorry, point of order. May we add Deputy Clerk as well?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend Ms. Christie Shaw as Deputy Clerk of the Board.
I'd like to amend my motion to add Christie Shaw as Deputy Clerk as well.
Okay, it's been moved in second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for the Clerk and the Deputy Clerk. We will have the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The Superintendent's Designee for attending in the absence of the Superintendent, Ms. Marcia Stevens. Is there a nomination for that?
Yes, sir. I recommend Ms. Marcia Stevens as the Superintendent Designee in my absence.
I move for approval of Marcia Stevens as the Superintendent Designee in the absence of Dr. Calverick.
Okay, it's been moved in second that Ms. Stevens, it's been moved in second that Ms. Stevens would be the representative for the Superintendent in her absence. We will now call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. Okay, now, the Student Representative to the School Board. The position.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the continuation. Oh, I don't know that I can make a motion, Ms. Stevens. I might have to yield to a Board member. Excuse me.
I move for approval of a Student Representative on the Caroline County School Board for the 2025 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now we will call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. At this point, we would need a motion to approve the Board Calendar for 2025. That includes the following dates: January 13th, 2025, February 10th, 2025, March 17th, 2025, April 14th, 2025, May 12th, 2025, June 9th, 2025, July 14th, 2025, August 18th, 2025, September 8th, 2025, October 20th, 2025, November 10th, 2025, and December 8th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Prior to a motion being made, I do want to draw attention for the community's benefit that March 17th, August 18th, and October 20th are not the standard second Mondays of the month. We have altered those dates specifically due to either a school closure, a holiday, the first day of school, or fall break taking place on our normal standard second Monday. Again, those three off-cycle dates are March 17th, August 18th, and October 20th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the dates listed, and I would like to congratulate our staff for having the foresight to notice. I mean, we always wind up changing those dates at the last minute anyway, and it's always helter-skelter trying to get that out in the community, but I would like to make the motion that we approve the meetings dates as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly second that we approve the meeting dates as presented. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. Now we are up for the approval of the Code of Conduct. We have seen the Code of Conduct, and I believe we have all signed for the Code of Conduct, so I just need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second that we approve the signing of the Code of Conduct by each of the School Board members. We will now call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. That now brings us to the Achieve 2027 Academies of...
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
I apologize, but it's been brought to my attention that we neglected to make a motion for approval of the School Board Committee Responsibilities for the 2025 school year that we discussed during our work session today. As such, I move for approval of the Board Committees.
Thank you. We are now open for a motion for the approval of School Board Committees. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly second that we would approve the School Board Committees as presented in the work session. We'll now call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Vels?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
And Mr. Taylor?
Aye. The motion carries. Okay, we will just pause for a minute. We're going to move the seats around for just one minute. Okay. Okay. So, do I need...
She'll tell you what to say.
Okay. Moving right along, we will now move to Agenda Item A, Achieve 2027 Academies of Caroline Implementation Update. Dr. Neighbors, Dr. Conley, and Mrs. Fry.
Sorry, my notes are going to be wrong. Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, thank you, members of the Board, and Dr. Calverick. I'm going to change all my notes. I am honored to be here tonight along with our Caroline Principal, Dr. Conley, and our CTE AP, Ms. Melissa Fry, to share a mid-year update on our Year One Pilot of the Academies of Caroline. To begin, our academies have been officially branded with fresh names chosen by our students and chorus binding logos. Our Leeds Academy focuses on leadership, empowerment, development, and service. Our Stars Academy develops our skills trade and applied resource solutions. And our Edge Academy encompasses entrepreneurship, digital growth, and excellence, and you will learn more about these three newly branded academies in our presentation. With our update on these three academies, we'll review our original purpose and goals that were presented just a year ago in January 2024. Provide updates on the academy's activities this first semester, sharing our aligned business partners and new partners, provide data around some of our small wins, and look forward to the next steps. I turn it over now to Dr. Conley.
Thank you, and good evening. The academies of Caroline are designed to provide... Looking at each one of our academies individually, the newly named Stars Academy focuses on hands-on learning in STEM, architecture, construction, agriculture, transportation, and health science. These align to the career pathways in agriculture, automotive, carpentry, nursing, sports medicine, and civil engineering. Students in this pathway may earn their CNA certification, their ASE certification, core craft, beef quality assurance, certiport, as well as enroll in dual enrollment options. Postgraduate opportunities look at direct employment, military roles, or furthering their education. The Leeds Academy focuses on service-oriented careers fostering leadership, empathy, and community engagement. Career pathways look at education, hospitality, human services, criminal justice, and cosmetology. The credentials offered in this academy to serve safe manager, parapro, aesthetics, workplace readiness. And the post-graduation students in this academy can look forward to are teaching, which we always need more of, law enforcement, culinary arts, as well as, again, military application. The last academy is the Edge Academy, with a focus on creativity, communication, technical innovation in marketing, information technology, and public administration. These align to the career pathways in mass media, marketing, cybersecurity, and business administration. Students in this academy can earn the Comp TIA Plus credentials, workplace readiness, postgraduate, I'm sorry, and will be taking the ASVAP Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. Post-graduation opportunities are looking at social media coordination, information technology security, or advanced studies in computer science and marketing. So for our Year One Pilot Goals, and what we're hoping to accomplish in the first year is each academy to create its own sense of identity, for the core classes to begin alignment to the career pathways, an increase in student attendance in 10th grade, and each student to be successful within their pathways. And to tell you how we've been achieving that so far, I will turn it over to Ms. Fry.
Thank you so much. In the folders that were handed out to the red folders are the three flyers that were on display so that you can see them more in depth, and there's also some academy sponsorship stuff that we'll be going over as well. So far this year, we have hosted three academy meetings. Our introductory meeting, students were welcomed into their assigned academies and introduced to the program. Student involvement meeting, as our second one, they collaborated in groups to brainstorm and submit academy name ideas. They also used a padlet to share what they would like to experience in the academies and presented their ideas to the group. And then our name reveal and guest speakers. We unveiled the new academy names and invited guest speakers to engage with our students. By holding regular academy meetings, students are building their school within a school community. Guest speakers can be tailored to each academy's career pathway and bring authenticity and relevance to the students. They get to see where that their education can bring them and open up plenty of doors. Looking ahead, we plan to restructure our approach in the new year. Monthly meetings will focus on hosting guest speakers, while English classes will serve as a space for delivering informational content. Additionally, we're exploring ways to gamify the experience responding to student interest and creating a sense of competition among the academies. This will help foster engagement, school spirit, and a stronger sense of identity within each academy. The competitions promote academies are coming to life because we noticed that students really wanted to be the best. They wanted to beat their friends' academies. They wanted to have pride in their academy. They want to be able to say things like the Stars Academy had the highest attendant out of... They want to be able to say things like "The Stars Academy had the highest attendance at our recent guest speaker meeting," or something more student-language-based. We plan to incorporate more competitions to further promote the academies and increase engagement. Promotional goal two: We have recently engaged with local businesses to build strong partnerships for our academies. This outreach includes distributing detailed brochures, which are in the red folders handed to you, and sponsorship letters tailored to their business and which academy they are a part of. We also invited businesses to participate in academy classes and meetings, provide real-world insights and mentorship opportunities for our students. Internally, we've established monthly academy meetings to keep students, staff, and stakeholders informed and engaged. We're exploring creating large banners for each academy to display prominently throughout the school, having stickers for their computers, and fostering a sense of identity and pride among the students. Our vision is to continually grow student involvement and highlight their work showcasing the incredible talent and effort within our academies. By having students actively involved in participating in the academy meetings, as previously mentioned, they will be creating a sense of identity. The competitions will continue to grow that identity and help the underclassmen, the freshmen form goals for where they want to be. Our business sponsorship plan: We've extended sponsorship opportunities to our current CTE business partners and are actively seeking new ones. The business partners who are consistently supporting our programs, their contributions include securing grants, organizing field trips, providing work-based learning experiences serving as guest speakers, and other various forms of partnership. Sponsors will have their logos featured on academy t-shirts and will be recognized for their incredible impact they make on our students' lives. This page is also in the folder you received. The purpose of the academy sponsorships: Caroline County Public Schools is proud to collaborate with business partners to enhance our career and technical education programs. Through sponsorships, we strengthen ties between the academies' local businesses, helping students prepare for careers, college, and civic life by offering real-world skills, insights, and networking opportunities. An academy sponsor is a local business or organization recognized for its sustained engagement and support of the CTE program. Sponsors are carefully selected based on their active involvement and are affiliated with specific academies relevant to their industry. This targeted approach ensures students gain insights and resources closely aligned with their career pathways. Sponsors are celebrated for their contributions. Their logos are prominently displayed on academy shirts, promotional materials, and branding items, highlighting their commitment to student success. Additionally, sponsors are publicly acknowledged at community events and in CCPS communications as vital supporters of educational career readiness. The goals and benefits of sponsorship: We want to make sure that sponsors know we are not in this for a money grab. We want to enhance our student engagement and create opportunities for work-based learning, and also create ties with colleges and other career paths students may go after school. Academy sponsors enjoy several benefits: Their logos are prominently featured, sponsors are publicly acknowledged, and we regularly have students celebrate their work. Our current sponsorship alignment: In the Leeds Academy, we have Bowling Green Health and Rehab, Caroline Fire and Rescue, Caroline Sheriff, Germana, Grand Canyon University, Mary Washington Healthcare, Virginia State Police. In the Stars Academy, we have Atlantic Builders, Dahlgren STEM, Faba, Ferber's Automotive, Habitat for Humanity, Life Care, MC Dean, Shehe Ford, and USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. In the Edge Academy, we have Bay Workforce Consortium, Fredericksburg Goodwill, Frontier Addresser, Rappahannock Electric Cooperative, Rappahannock United Way, Topside Federal Credit Union, and Value City Furniture. We're also excited to say since we started our sponsorship initiative, we have four new sponsors: Simvensions, James River Equipment, Case or Compressors, and Wawa.
Dr. Conley?
Okay, so that's where we are. And now we'll talk about where we're going, highlight just a few things. Biggest thing we're focusing on right now is building that brand and building belonging. We believe that the students that feel more connected to the school are going to want to be here. That will reduce the chronic absenteeism rate and increase the on-time graduation rate. You can also see there other goals such as, or other goals establishing the budget for '25-'26 and making sure that those business partnerships will lead to the high-quality work-based learning experiences that align with our student frame, I'm sorry, the new performance framework for accreditation. Also upcoming, we have our first class of CTE completers in the school year '25-'26. That will be coming up next year, which we're very excited about. Also, again, expanding those work-based experiences into the high-demand, high-wage fields and to continue to build that academy community. Couple things that we've accomplished so far, just from a attendance and data perspective. If you look at our graduation cohort attendance in '23-'24, 76 students missed 10 or more days of school. That same number has reduced to 53. You can also see our discipline data, 227 major referrals in this cohort, down to 95 in just a year. Looking at year over year, so looking at the 10th graders of 2027 versus 10th graders of 2026, you can see, again, significant drop in the number of referrals and a slight drop in attendance. So looking forward, what do we need to be successful? Number one, we need additional staff. We are going to need additional staff to support the core classes as well as our CTE pathways. As we expand this and expand our opportunities for our students, staffing is going to be needed, as well as community partnerships with our business sponsors for field trips that are aligned to our academy, and transportation to work-based learning opportunities. Some of the power in this is not going to be within the walls of Caroline. It's going to be getting our students out into the field and practicing what they are learning in their classrooms, as well as community support. Any of our academy sponsors who are listening would like to come and be a guest speaker. You are more than welcome to speak at our academies and help us create these opportunities for our students. So in conclusion, as we reflect on the progress of our academies, it's clear we're not just building programs. We're working on shaping futures. Through innovative three E pathways and meaningful partnerships, we're addressing absenteeism, fostering positive growth in discipline, ensuring students graduate with the skills that truly matter. These achievements underscore the power of collaboration, the vision providing every student with a personalized and impactful educational journey. By expanding our career pathways and strengthening our community ties to enrich these learning experiences, we really can elevate the students' learning experience to new heights. And to succeed, we must embrace our collective commitment as educators, as a school board, businesses, and the broader community to unite to support the students of Caroline High School. Thank you.
Thank you for your attention to this robust presentation. You know that we're only in our first semester of the first-year pilot, but we have big goals and big dreams for our students. Any questions?
Do board members have questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment and a possible resource. My state initiative is Champions for Impact. And so as we're collecting stories, if I know any local, I'll be sure to share because those could be potential individuals to come in and speak. The second is, and I don't know if you've done this already, to look at our Chamber of Commerce for our county because those would capture our local businesses. And I sent Dr. Calver just now an email to Toledo Public Schools. They presented at a national conference, and they have done an amazing job with their sponsorship packages for businesses and then mapping courses in partnership with, let's say, healthcare, for example. They map that to Germana, to Mary Washington, so that there is a pipeline that is very concrete. And their templates are available as a free resource, so we may want to look at that and see if we could use it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other board members have questions or comments, if I may?
When you're going after a robust program such as this, and I applaud the effort here because this is tremendous and I think it'll yield good returns. But when you're going after businesses, businesses are going to want to know what that return on the investment is for that particular business. So, one, we need to clearly articulate what that is going to be. I think we also need to develop a what we need. You highlight, you know, there's a financial requirement here. Well, what is that? Put a dollar amount to it. I mean, that may be a challenge and it may be aspirational, but at least it's, you know, it's not pie in the sky. We need funding and leave it at that. So be as specific as you can. And then when we, you know, go after businesses, not just local, you need, I believe, you need to think regional because the employers aren't just going to be local employers. They're going to be regional employers. And some of that sponsorship money will come regionally, especially if we're showing that return on the investment for the region. And all of some of those comments that have been offered by my colleagues here lead you in that direction. All right? I think that's, you know, very important. And always reinforce workforce development, workforce development. That workforce development equals into that return on investment, which then helps you get that business to get to yes. Ultimately, that's what it is. Because it's more than just transportation. You need resources to do a whole lot more than just, you know, get folks from point A to point B. But I applaud the effort. Anything that I can do to support and to help you in that endeavor, by all means, don't hesitate. Let me know. I just have a little taste in doing some of this in my other jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hubbard. Just so you know, we have potential business sponsorship letters that we have that we fill out based on which academy they are, what the business is, and what our needs are for that. So we do have individualized letters with specific requests that go to them and how they can support.
Other board members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to take a moment just to commend Dr. Neighbors, Dr. Conley, Ms. Fry, Mr. Justin, all of those who have brought this vision to fruition. I'm really impressed with the number of sponsorships that are currently in the hopper. Very impressed with not only the fostering of current relationships, but also the intentional effort to bring more sponsorships and businesses to this particular program. It opens up a world of opportunity for our students that wasn't available before. And I do really think that the old adage, and the research suggests that businesses who are seen to be good corporate citizens in turn see an increase in their bottom line. So I think we can keep making the case that this effort will not be in vain from not only a perspective of doing what's good for our students, but also for doing what's good for them. So I definitely see a win-win in the work that you're doing. And as Dr. Hubbard stated, anything that I can do to push the ball forward, so to speak, I'm available. So once again, thank you so much for your hard work.
Yes. Other board members? Dr. Calver?
I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to talk about a number of things that are in the Virginia Department of Education hopper right now. And I could speak at length, but I am going to try to be very succinct. Due in this month, on the 21st of January, is a draft of high-quality work-based learning experiences. This draft is out for viewing, and anyone is able to provide feedback. I strongly urge to have people review this. We are actually gathering internally, but also on Thursday, as a region of superintendents to review. What has occurred is they have taken 12 work-based learning buckets, of which we have embraced beautifully over the last few years, and they have condensed them into four. The four soon-to-be-approved learning experiences are apprenticeship, internship, clinical experiences, and school-based enterprise, which is ultimately running a business within the school setting. Those are the four. So things that we have married in the past, such as service learning and guest speakers and mentorship, those are no longer acceptable because they have also identified these four experiences as having to meet the following five criteria: A school-coordinated experience that includes sustained or intensive engagement with industry professionals in high-demand fields. Number two, application of coursework learning in real-world settings. Number three, building of critical thinking with your five Cs, which we are all familiar with. Number four, acceleration of learning toward the earning of a nationally certified certificate of completion, industry-recognized credential, and/or attainment of post-secondary credit. And number five is the student engaged in one of these four work-based learning experiences must receive ongoing, meaningful feedback and guidance through mentorship and supervision from industry professionals. So whichever board member amongst us this evening spoke about the need for clarity of role and responsibility for our corporate sponsors, that will be essential. In addition to that, I really want us as a senior staff to revisit the contribution cycle that we talked about in a meeting a number of months ago about how you create this contribution cycle that becomes part of how you breathe and do work. I also want us to make sure, and I was pleased to see it as, I think, item number six on what's to come, we need to do a crosswalk of what we're doing well and what we need to change or modify or massage in order to be aligned with these four areas of work-based learning in order for them to count for the performance framework. Those other things may count for graduation requirements, but they will not count for the performance framework, which is accreditation for the division. We also need to investigate flex time. Dr. Coons, the state superintendent, is eager to see divisions embrace flexible seat time, meaning that every student no longer needs to have that archaic 140-seat hours. We have the latitude, if we are putting these students into academies in 10th grade and 11th grade and they're doing cross-curricular learning interdisciplinary, that senior year, they don't need to be in the seat all day long. They need to be assigned to one of those four work-based learning experiences. But you know what? That takes staff, and it takes funding, and it takes transportation. So come out, talk to your legislators. We need grassroots efforts because this is the way of the world. We want Caroline to be at the forefront, and these academies are going to help be the conduit of this work. So that's my soapbox on this topic. But I would have been remiss if I did not make those comments about next steps in conjunction with the great presentation. So thank you.
Thank you very much, all the board members, as well as those persons who have presented tonight. Certainly, the board is very impressed with what you're doing, and we are thankful. I can't help but think about Mr. Jess when he came last year with this idea. And to see it still going to fruition, that's just excellent. And again, it shows what kind of employees and staff we have in Caroline County. I always say we have the best. And the other thing that I would say is I'm glad to see information regarding the progress, where we can actually look at a reduction in referrals. We can look at a reduction in absenteeism. That's proof that the program is working. And I would say too, in closing, thankful to the sponsors. The sponsors, we can't say thank you enough to those businesses that have stepped up to the plate and have agreed to work with us and our students. And they're going to get something out of it as well, so thank you very much. Excellent job.
Thank you.
That takes us to agenda item number five, awards, recognitions, and condemnations, and so forth. Superintendent with the Student of the Month program.
Prior to beginning recognition, we are cognizant of the time. It is 6:21 with a public hearing scheduled for 6:30, so our plan will be to complete... It is 6:21 with a public hearing scheduled for 6:30, so our plan will be to complete the recognition period and then pause for the budget public hearing. Good evening, Chair Taylor and Vice Chair Fortune and members of the board. Exposure to art is critical to the development of every child. Art not only teaches students how to express themselves in creative and individual ways, but students who participate in regular art-related activities perform better academically. They develop greater confidence, and they sharpen their fine motor skills. Beyond these benefits, our education promotes problem-solving, critical thinking, perseverance, growth mindset, collaboration, focus, and accountability. All power skills CCPS graduates need to be 3E-ready, enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. In cooperation with CCPS art teachers, I have the great fortune of recognizing one student each month with a certificate of honor for their individual artwork. The student's art is then on display at the school board office for the remainder of the month for all guests and employees to enjoy. Ms. Jennifer Harrelson and/or Ms. Teresa Hicks will be here to honor our student this evening. I'll turn it over to Ms. Hicks.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here representing Ms. Harrelson, our art teacher at Madison Elementary. This evening, we'd like to recognize Skylar Hickman for her exceptional artwork. In Skylar's piece, which is entitled Blizzard. (applause). It's entitled Blizzard in Pine Tree Forest, very timely. It's a very colorful but icy scene that shows a weather event, a blizzard. After discussing what a blizzard is and naming some examples, especially the story of Rudolph, students paint in a bright sky, students were able to show the sky's bright light filtered by a blanket of white snow blowing. Students drew and cut out and glued down pine tree shapes and used oil pastels to add line and color to the trees. Finally, the students added snow to the ground and tree tops. Skylar excelled at her depiction of a beautiful wintertime blizzard as she painted her snow and lined up her trees. She is an amazing artist, and we are very proud to show off her creative skills.
(applause). Congratulations. There's no better depiction of modern nature than this picture. We're at a whole new topic.
For the next month, we promise we'll take good care of it, and we'll make sure it gets back to the kids, okay? Congratulations. Thank you.
(applause).
Okay, we will pause at this time for our, oh, I'm sorry. Principal.
Greetings, Chairperson Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. It's my pleasure this evening to honor and celebrate our great building leaders from each of our six school campuses. As you are aware, this year, Caroline County Schools has been cooking up greatness, and behind every great recipe in Caroline is a great chef making it all happen. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you Caroline County Public Schools' Master Chefs. As I call their name, as I as I call their names, I invite our school leaders forward to stand and be recognized. Master Chef Brown, principal at Lewis and Clark Elementary School.[869.23][869.23](applause). Master Chef Connolly, principal at Caroline High School.[875.69][875.69](applause). Master Chef Hexwell, principal at Bowling Green Elementary School.[881.56][881.56](applause). Master Chef Hicks, principal at Madison Elementary School.[887.44][887.44](applause). Master Chef Just, principal at Caroline Middle School.[892.94][892.94](applause). And Master Chef White, administrator at Lotus Academy.[899.00][899.00](applause). Governor Yonkin has dedicated this week, January 12th through 18th, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. He's honoring he's honoring great school leaders throughout the Commonwealth with the following proclamation. Whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school, staff, and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process. And whereas school principals serve as educational leaders managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools. And whereas school principals serve as instructional leaders, equipping teachers with training and resources, and delivering personalized and innovative student programs to ensure every student has the opportunity to succeed. And whereas school principals are entrusted with the opportunity and responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting imparting knowledge on our children while they are at school. And whereas school principals work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community to proactively prepare students to be productive members of our economy, informed citizens in our democracy, and engaged neighbors in our communities. And whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of school leaders in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education that prepares them for life. Now therefore, our governor does hereby recognize January 12th through 18th, 2025, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and calls this observance to the attendance of to the attention of all citizens.[1022.94][1022.94](applause). Each of these school leaders, we'll we'll do a little bit more clapping here in a moment too. Each of these school leaders offers a unique skill set to their school buildings, and we're grateful for their leadership as they continue to cook up greatness in each of their buildings. We look forward to celebrating our school leaders, master chefs, throughout the week. Please join me in thanking them for their service to our students, staff, parents, and And tonight is just the beginning. We will be making special deliveries throughout the week and continuing the celebrations. Thank you for joining us this evening and celebrating these great leaders.
Thank you again, on behalf of the board, for our principals and the great job that you're doing. We appreciate you, and congratulations. At this time, we need to go for our, we can finish that and then go to, okay. Okay, all right. We'll we'll finish our recognitions.
(inaudible) While we know that a principal does not do it alone, they have amazing assistant principals as well as administrative interns in some of our building. And I just scanned the audience, and I do see one of our admin interns who is a budding principal in the making. And I hope I'm not overlooking anyone else, but Lady Rajan Blam, will you please stand and be recognized?[1133.15][1133.15](applause). We have an amazing intern at Bowling Green doing an amazing job, looking forward to the greatness you're going to continue to bring. So thank you. Outstanding. Great evening. School board.
Great evening. School board. Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Mr. Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. This evening, I am proud to recognize 10 outstanding educators from our division who have achieved a significant milestone in their professional journey. These dedicated individuals successfully completed the intensive one-year reading specialist certificate portion of the William &amp; Mary Literacy Leadership Reading Specialist Cohort in October 2024. Representing the elementary and middle school levels, as well as our central office, these educators have demonstrated exceptional commitment to advancing literacy education and supporting our students' success. We have joining us tonight four of the 10 educators. Please come forward as your name is called. Ms. Shelley Beal.[1208.71][1208.71](applause). Mr. Zachary Caldwell.[1216.58][1216.58](applause). Mrs. Amanda Fletcher.[1223.26][1223.26](applause). And Mrs. Christina Woodall.[1229.21][1229.21](applause). Other educators who could not be here due to illness or other commitments that like to call their names, Ms. Jessica Edwards, Ms. Elizabeth Flaherty, Ms. Kim Haslip, Ms. Ashley Harris, Ms. Hever Isel, and Ms. Toya Trueheart. We'll be sure that they also received their certificates, but for now, please join me in celebrating these exceptional educators for their dedication to lifelong learning and their impactful contributions to literacy education in our schools. Thank you all.[1270.65][1270.65](applause).
Along with our instructional leadership team, this is the first ever fully-sponsored cohort that we've done in our nine years. I don't know if I dare say ever, but we fully funded either our masters and/or the postmaster certificate, and now we're in our second cohort with master specialists. That's what you do when you believe in your people and you invest in them. They stay, they're retained, and they do beautiful things in the classroom. And actually, one of those four is already serving their leading coach position. And I know that the three that came up alongside Ms. Beal will also find themselves aspiring to greatness as positions open. So I just wanted to say that out loud because it is a really exciting moment for this corner of the room as well. So congratulations.[1350.65][1350.65](coughs).
Good evening, Chair Taylor. Vice Chair.
Members of the board and Dr. Calverick. I am thrilled to recognize Ms. Avery Inge, who's a fourth-grade teacher at Bowling Green Elementary this evening. Ms. Inge has successfully completed the ITEACH teacher licensure program. She's our very first one. She finished all components of the teacher licensure process in October, and her application is now with the VDOE to receive her full 10-year teaching license. Additionally, Ms. Inge has played a key role in educating fellow teachers and others about the benefits of the ITEACH program. We currently have seven teachers in the program and are hopeful to add many more.[1407.58][1407.58](applause).
The recognition of the Virginia Writers Project Winter Journal, Dr. Neighbors.
Good evening, Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, and members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Calverick. I'm excited to recognize and celebrate our nine Caroline High School students who have been accepted for the publication of the Virginia Writers Project Winter Journal. These students were chosen from dozens of submissions across the state. The theme this year is giving back or taking care of the greater good. In a moment, I will call the students forward to receive a certificate, but before I do so, I'd like to call forward their teacher, Ms. Lisa Gaddy, who believed in them, encouraged them, and who is also our CHS Teacher of the Year. Thank you, Ms. Gaddy.[1481.11][1481.11](applause). We will first honor those that are present tonight. Regan Hall. Faith Beasley. Kayla Wright. And Mackenzie Pullum. Let's give them a round of applause.[1501.23][1501.23](applause). We also had three individuals who couldn't be there, be here tonight, Kayla Howard, Nathaniel Allison, and Cheyenne Davis. And any family members in the audience, if you don't mind standing so we can thank you for your support of your students.[1524.35][1524.35](applause). And we have one more special surprise. Can I have Kayla and Mackenzie come to the podium, please? They are going to share their poem that has been accepted and will be published.
My poem was called "Of Selflessness." Being selfless means you think less about yourself and more about the needs of others. The kindness and generosity and concern for your fellow person is guided by your altruistic heart, seeking nothing in return other than knowing you did the right thing. A selfish person's actions to help someone is a heartfelt act of love, like chocolates on Valentine's Day or serving food at a soup kitchen, and anything that truly helps those in need. Such persons are truly earthly angels. They help make everyone the best they can be.[1588.65][1588.65](applause). Hello, good evening. My poem was called "Help." To be used but never held, watched but never seen, listened to but never heard, no face, no hope. These are the cries of the homeless and hungry. Respond to those who are unable to sustain themselves with the most simplest of necessities. Donate food, money, and your time to organizations that help the men, women, and children in need in your town.[1619.03][1619.03](applause).
What power to have these students' words published and being out or read for eternity. So thank you, and thank you, Ms. Gaddy.[1632.76][1632.76](applause).
Thank you, and congratulations to our students. At this time, we will pause for our public hearing. Agenda item number six, introduction of public hearing. Dr. Farley and Marshall Stevens.
Thank you for everyone's patience, as we want to recognize our staff and our students this evening. So on to our public hearing. Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, and members of the board. Dr. John Fairley, Director of Finance, and I are pleased to be with you this evening to introduce the FY26 budget priorities for the school board public hearing. In this evening's public hearing, we will review the governor's proposal FY26 budget and the projected state funding from the VDOE planning tool. We will then review our comprehensive stakeholder input process and our fiscal year 26 budget priorities. Lastly, we will cover next steps in the FY26 school budget process and then open up the public hearing. Governor Yonkin has proposed nearly $1 billion in new education funding amendments that would bring the state spending on K-12 education in the Commonwealth to more than $22 billion over the biennium. The governor's amended budget calculates the state share of the compensation supplement funds based on a 3% salary increase effective July 1, 2024, and an additional 3% increase effective July 1, 2025 for funded SOQ instructional and support positions, academic-year governor schools, and regional alternative education centers. Additional proposals include $290 million for school construction, $517.6 million in direct aid, $110.7 million increase in support for English learners, and a $35 million increase to fund high school dual enrollment and career technical education. The VDOE planning tool, formerly referred to as the Calc Tool, was released by VDOE on January 7, 2025, with the governor's proposed amendments. There were not many changes to the original fiscal year 25-26 biennium budget for K-12 education. The second year of the biennium revenues are certainly not as robust as CCPS has seen the past couple of years. The planning tool results in an additional $1.475 million of new recurring state funds. The funds are The funds are generated from three different pots of funds. $211,000 for English as a second language due to the new SOQ standards. $744,000 for the compensation supplement to support the 3% proposed increase for the SOQ positions. And $367,000 for sales tax and basic aid. Staff is utilizing an ADM of 4340 at this time and will monitor and adjust the ADM as necessary throughout the budget process. I will pass it over to John, Dr. Farley, for the budget priorities.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, Board members, Superintendent Calverick. This year, CCPS principals and department heads submitted 49 budget requests, each aligned to an Achieve 2027 strategic plan or objective. To evaluate and prioritize each request, numerous superintendent committees, the budget advisory, senior staff, and the school board reviewed and characterized each item as mandatory critical need, need or want. Additionally, to seek further stakeholder engagement, CCPS invited parents, students, staff, and community members to respond to the FY26 budget survey released in December. 481 responses were received, with 50.3% of the respondents being employees, and 49.7% of the respondents identifying as parents or families, students, and community members. 114 open feedback survey comments were also received and carefully considered. 200 advisory group members had an opportunity to rank their highest critical need priorities for the FY26 operational budget. CCPS FY26 budget priorities. You have before you a hard copy of the draft FY26 budget booklet. Please note, all budget priorities included in the booklet and included on this slide are listed as approximate costs. Position estimates use Step Five salaries plus expenses associated with all benefits, including health insurance rates for employees plus win. CCPS is utilizing the VDOE calculation tool, or now planning tool, received this past Wednesday to finalize figures with the CCPS budget module prior to the superintendent's February presentation to the school board and board of supervisors. Compensation and benefits. Achieve 2027 Goal Four talent management aims to attract, invest in, and develop a diverse and highly qualified staff who facilitates educational excellence for all students. Regionally competitive compensation and benefits strengthens CCPS's ability to recruit and retain a diverse and highly effective workforce. Employee compensation salary. As we begin the budget process for FY26, we are reviewing CCPS compensation with our regional peers. The governor proposed for the 25-26 biennium a 3% compensation increase each year for SOQ positions. The governor did not amend the original compensation proposal when he introduced his budget amendments in December. While CCPS has made great strides in improving compensation on our teacher scale over the past three years, our educational support scale remains behind our regional peers. CCPS is working on a compensation plan to focus on increasing the pay of the following employee groups: instructional assistants, custodians, and food service technicians, while remaining competitive amongst our regional peers in relation to our teacher scale. Over the next two months, our human resources and finance teams will further develop scales that continue to move CCPS compensation forward in the region. Health insurance. While CCPS will not receive a formal health insurance renewal rate from the local choice until late February, a review of our 2024 claims data are indicating a double-digit increase in premiums. CCPS is using 14.24% premium increase to calculate an approximate cost, however, this will be modified upon receipt of final premium information. Exceptional education. The Office of Exceptional Education Services provides a variety of support services to students with disabilities. Data gleaned from survey respondents and advisory groups affirms the division's need to invest in additional medical, instructional, and compliance staff to support extensive growth in the CCPS exceptional education population, the diversified service needs, and an increase in novice staffing. The following exceptional education priorities reflect these findings and emphasize the need to expand access and opportunities for all students with disabilities. Five skilled nurses. CCPS currently utilizes outside agencies to employ six LPNs at approximately $50 an hour. The LPNs support students' medical needs outlined within their IEPs. Medical services vary, but currently include feeding tube support, seizure disorder support, toileting support with colostomy, and physical support for shunts. Transitioning from an external provider to school division employment would provide a significant cost savings, provide greater opportunity for professional learning and service flexibility, ensure compliance with the Code of VA nursing requirements. Five instructional aides and one teacher. As the CCPS exceptional education population continues to grow, the need for additional service models and the intensity and impact of students have increased. Specifically, the annual December 1 count from '22-23 documented 589 students with disabilities, 651 in '23-24, and 694 students with disabilities were reported for the current '24-25 school year. The two-year increase of 105 exceptional education students represents an 18% increase. The additional need for the five instructional aides and one teacher would help in addressing the increased number of students with disability instructional needs. Four building case managers. Nationwide teacher shortages have significantly impacted exceptional education by limiting the availability of qualified teachers for students with disabilities, leading to larger caseloads, less individualized attention, potential for unqualified staff to fill positions, and ultimately hindering the ability of students to reach their full academic potential due to inadequate support and instruction. Within CCPS, 64% of our exceptional educators are novice, meaning professional licensure or three years or less of experience. To ensure students are provided FAP, a free and appropriate public education, divisions across the Commonwealth have begun to separate two major exceptional education responsibilities: regulatory compliance and specially-designed instruction. Providing every school with a building case manager would enable our exceptional education teachers to master differentiated instruction, progress monitoring, and service delivery, while the seasoned building case manager would support case management of child study, eligibility, and IEP meetings. Student support services. Achieve 2027 Goal Three promotes health and safety of staff and students. Student support services promote safe and respectful learning environments while fostering healthy habits that promote optimal physical, social, emotional, and mental well-being. A post-COVID budget trend: this year's budget feedback and school data reflect the continued need to further enhance core wellness supports, tiered instruction, and crisis response Secondary mental health provider. The VA Department of Health 2020 Comprehensive Assessment identified Caroline County being a mental health desert and a provider to patient ratio of 1 to 3,070. The inability to access a provider and appointment, secure transportation, and navigate medical insurance complexities are a few of the hurdles our CCPS students and families experience. As such, school counselors and social workers are being called upon to support students experiencing more significant mental health needs in the school environment. This has been evident in our number of at-risk assessments completed the past two years. For the '23-24 school year, the secondary level completed 119 assessments, 90 at CMS, 29 at CHS, with 17 being at an elevated level requiring immediate help. As of the close of first semester of '24-25, the secondary level has completed 28 assessments, 20 at the middle school, 8 at the high school, 10 requiring elevated-level support, including an immediate admission to Mary Washington. The addition of this position will provide in-school mental health services to Lotus Academy, CMS, and CHS, and will help spearhead the risk and threat assessment process. School counseling. The conversion of two 10-and-a-half-month employees to 11-month contracts for high school counselors supports master schedule completion, on-time graduation monitoring, and continued progress on the new 3E performance framework requirements. Additionally, this additional contractual time will enable school counselors to better meet the 80/20 VA Code Service requirement, which mandates 80% of counselors' time to be hip-to-hip with students and 20% on program planning and administrative tasks. The additional .5 school counseling position is slated to address Bowling Green Elementary Schools' growing student population and increased number of student risk assessments. There were 16 as of November 26. A third-time, full-time counselor would increase Bowling Green's ability to provide mental health services, school counseling lessons, focus on small groups, and crisis intervention for students and families. General Ed teachers. Let's take a look at the general ed positions needed to address increased student enrollment, standards of quality mandates, program endeavors, and coursework aligned with the new VDOE performance framework. Reading coach and innovation specialist. Our current CMS reading specialist position is funded through all-in funds, which expire in '25-26. Local funding of this critical position is essential to Caroline Middle School's turnaround improvement to increase reading achievement, meet full accreditation, and align with the Virginia Literacy Act, which states, "In addition to the full-time equivalent positions required elsewhere in this section, each school board shall employ one reading specialist for each 550 students in kindergarten through grade 5, and one reading specialist for each 1,100 students in grades 6 through 8." CCPS currently has five innovation specialists, in which one full-time position is funded through the Title I grant and serves our title schools. While CCPS budget priorities have been focusing on increasing staff compensation in the past several years, the Title I grant has not been increasing by the same rate. Thus, we are requesting that the 1.0 innovation specialist position currently funded in Title I be moved to local funding. This is not a new position, but a request to switch the funding stream of the position. The SOQ states one innovation specialist per thousand students, thus the position is required. The innovation specialist directly supports one-to-one initiatives, supports PLCs with instructional technology, provides professional learning on new applications, and supports our teachers in integrating innovation into their curriculum. 8.5 classroom teachers. The following 8.5 classroom teacher requests reflect needs associated with enrollment growth, program expansion, student-teacher ratio, and access to coursework. One full-time equivalent position for Spanish. This position would be split between CMS and CHS to address increased course requests, high student-teacher ratios, and the need for greater access to world-language courses to complete advanced placement diploma requirements. .5 ASL, American Sign Language. This part-time position is needed to support students with completed their sequence for a standard or advanced diploma. Two elective FTEs. Both CMS and CHS have an increased request for agriculture. Example, 239 student requests for ag, and we're only able to offer 80 seats. And visual arts classes. Both elective positions would be split between CMS and CHS to support access to these electives and reduce student-teacher ratios in courses. One ELA full-time position. The VDOE monitors ratios for English teachers to be an average of 1 to 24, and we are pushing that average this year, particularly in ninth grade. As an example, English nine honors started the year with 30 in a class, and ninth-grade teacher ratio is 24 to 1. The overall ELA department ratio is 1 to 22.9. As our academies grow, this will also impact our ELA classes, as four high school English teachers also teach other electives such as mass communications, yearbooks, Teachers for Tomorrow, and theater. Two English language learner positions, full-time. The standards of quality English learner staffing ratios change effective FY25 based on EL student proficiency levels. The new ratios will require CCPS students, or CCPS to have 6.64 LIEP teachers with our current levels. Currently, we only have five teachers. Two general ed unassigned FTEs. CCPS is requesting two unassigned teachers to address rising ADM. Due to continued increases in membership, paired with restrictive K-3 class reduction and CT class size ratios, CCPS must be prepared for the establishment of additional 25-26 classrooms. As an example, we had to add two positions after school started at Bowling Green, both in August and November. Support staff. Support staff are the backbone of Caroline County public schools. School support staff members play a vital role in supporting students and colleagues throughout the day to create a positive and productive learning environment. While it's true that teachers are the stars of the show in our educational system, as within any production, there are dozens of support staff who work to ensure that children are healthy and happy enough to learn. Lunch buddies, admin intern, and receptionist. Lunch buddies provide students with a trusted adult, reinforce PBIS expectations, and foster connections within the cafeteria environment. Their presence ensures teachers receive unencumbered lunches and is a vital investment in student support and safety, staff well-being, and a positive school environment. Currently, the Bowling Green administrative intern position is funded by all-in grant monies. Local dollars will be needed to continue the level of leadership support Bowling Green requires to serve 868 students. Three administrators continue to be essential to the successful monitoring of academics, behavior, exceptional education, and student culture. LCES serves over 1,000 students and families. This is the receptionist position. To provide high-quality customer service, data entry, and responsiveness, LCES has a high need for an additional office assistant. And I think our Bowling Green ADM 868 is off. We'll get to that presentation later. Payroll specialist and administrative assistant. With over 700 employees and increased payroll tasks and complexities, a second payroll specialist is critical to increasing the division's capacity for payroll processing, including calculating wages, processing deductions, ensuring timely payments, maintaining payroll records, and complying with federal and state tax regulations. This second position is currently paid under all-in funds, which expire in FY26. An additional administrative assistant position is needed to support the coordinators of assessment and student support services. This position would provide support to year-round testing processes, orders, logistics, McKinney-Vento eligibility forms, and grant monitoring, data entry and management, 504 Medicaid tracking, and other administrative and budgetary tasks associated with federal and state regulatory Technology. Funding a regular technology replacement cycle in K-12 education is essential to ensure students and staff have access to up-to-date tools that support effective teaching and learning. Modern, reliable devices enhance performance, improve security, and expand functionality, enabling seamless learning experiences and increased workflows. Technology replacement cycle. In past years, $100,000 has been allocated annually through the Capital Improvement Plan for classroom and staff technology, with the ultimate goal of shifting funding to recurring source such as the operations budget. Due to rising costs and increased positions, $113,000 is needed to sufficiently replace classroom and staff technology. Chromebooks are purchased annually for rising third, sixth, and ninth-grade students to align with warranties and refresh cycles. These purchases, historically funded by VPSA and grants, now face reduced grant availability. With $180,000 from VPSA and a $36,000 local match, the division must purchase 1,162 Chromebooks at $350 each totaling $407,000. Overall, $519, $700 of recurrent funds are needed to consistently fulfill the annual replacement cycle. I will now turn it over to Ms. Stevens, who will go over our FY26 budget next steps.
We encourage all community members, staff, and students to remain involved in the budget process. On February 10, the FY26 budget will be presented to the school board, and the following night, the budget will be presented to the board of supervisors. The county administrator is scheduled to present the fiscal year 26 budget to the board of supervisors on March 11, with a public hearing being held on April 8. Chair Taylor, we are ready to have you open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you. Did any board members have a question prior to opening the public hearing?
We're allowed to do that. I understood you correctly. The admin assistant at Bowling Green is an all-in-funded position, so if we have problems, how are we going to fund that when the all-in funds goes away? That's a position, I think we all agree, is a much-needed position, so.
It is.
It is. So currently, it is in the all-funding bucket of funds. We will carry some all-in funding over into the next year. However, we are introducing it into the operational budget in order to hopefully be able to fund it within the operations budget. This is a long process. We are just beginning this process, and we will continue throughout the, the several months of going through the general assembly budget, et cetera.
I do think one aspect that is important to point out in relation to the admin intern position at Bowling Green is that we have a variety of equity commitments, and we recognize that differentiation of resources is essential based on data that every building brings to the table. And so, we acknowledge the need for three administrators at Bowling Green, and we were able to use ESER funds two years ago to actually breathe life into the admin intern role at Bowling Green with the second year being converted in absence of ESER funds to all-in monies because Leila Rajabland, who you met just earlier this evening, she oversees all of the tutoring programs that all-in monies are supporting at Bowling Green. But that will run dry, and so we too believe that it is essential that we take steps now to get that into the operational budget.
Thank you.
Any other board members with a question or concern prior to the opening of the public hearing? Seeing no one wishing to speak, I will now open the public hearing for the FY twenty-six budget. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this public hearing? If you are, you will come to the front, and you'll be allowed three minutes. Anyone wanting to speak regarding the public hearing, you may come at this time. Any citizen who would like to speak regarding the FY twenty-six budget public hearing will come at this time. Final call, anyone wishing to speak regarding the public hearing will come at this time. Seeing no one with the request to speak, I will now close the public hearing. That takes us to information from the district. Information, item A, soup with the soup. Ms. Paige Tucker.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. I am thrilled to share the outcomes of our Soup with the Superintendent staff meetings held in November twenty-twenty-four. These gatherings provided an excellent opportunity to gather valuable insights from staff across all six CCPS schools. Additionally, this practice aligns with Achieve twenty-twenty-seven, Goal two-point-one Communication, and Goal four Talent Management. This evening, I will highlight key trends that emerged from these discussions and outline the next steps based on the feedback received. These meetings are truly a cornerstone of our staff retention efforts, serving as a vital in-person forum for employees to voice their concerns and share ideas on topics such as benefits and retention strategies. All feedback is carefully reviewed and presented to senior leadership for thoughtful consideration. Our meetings were held across all six buildings in November following the successful completion of the first nine weeks of the school year. A consistent list of questions was shared with staff during the lunch gatherings. These questions were carefully crafted to gather valuable insights on first-quarter successes, the professional learning platform rollout, and related PD needs, recruitment and retention strategies, second semester supply and resource needs, and any other topics of interest. Highlights on what's working well included very positive feedback for the three-hour planning that was allotted for Benchmark Advanced Training and planning for elementary teachers. We are investigating the ability to host another planning for reading as well as add an additional planning for math in the second semester. Elementary teachers also love the additional thirty minutes of planning on their calendar in the morning, which we will maintain for the next year. The ability to do, for staff to do trainings over the summer, summer via the new PD platform vector was a great success. The anytime, anywhere offerings enabled staff to complete mandatory and optional training virtually when convenient for their individual schedules. Instruction and HR will work to have the summer PD schedule out no later than the last day of school. Note, the Vector PD platform purchase stemmed directly from last year's Soup with the Superintendent meetings and fulfills Achieve Goal Four, one-point-three Professional Learning Platform. Bonus and stipend increases were very well received. The increase to stipends was also a direct reflection of feedback received in the spring twenty-twenty-four meetings with the superintendent. The newly instituted bookkeeper trainings and monthly meetings have helped enhance skills, refine practices, and create strong communication between school-based staff and finance. HR is also now attending these meetings. The Train the Trainer for Benchmark was a big success, and continued training opportunities will be shared. Exceptional education students continue to show academic growth, and EE and HR continue to work hard to seek highly qualified staff via recruitment and grow-your-own programming, like the UMW Apprenticeship and I Teach. Additionally, as you've heard, the FY twenty-six budget requests include multiple new EE positions and compensation efforts. Finally, staff members were excited about the implementation and impact of the student cellphone policy. CCPS has aligned the current policy with the recommendations from the VDOE. An area of opportunity. While Vector has been a huge success for staff members, feedback indicated many staff members were having a hard time locating information in the platform as well as needing training on how to upload external trainings and conferences in the system. Human Resources will be creating handouts and videos to help staff with these issues during the month of January. Staff offered many great ideas and suggestions for enhancing recruitment and retention strategies. We are currently exploring options such as allowing staff to wear jeans daily, providing paid maternity leave, offering health benefits to our long-term substitutes who are in important year-long assignments, and potentially adding mental health days to the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six calendar. Additionally, we are exploring the feasibility of adding additional half-days for planning, increasing paraprofessional pay as a priority in the FY twenty-six budget, and exploring the possibility of a locally-funded preschool classroom for children of teachers residing outside of the division or above income threshold for current CCPS preschool programming. Staff express satisfaction with their current supplies and resources. However, there were several requests for additional science materials, and we will collaborate with our science specialists to assess specific needs and associated costs. The Board of Supervisors, in partnership with Caroline's Promise, did roll out the second year of funding for every teacher to order one hundred and fifty dollars of supplies, and this was rolled out last Friday in The Insider. Toner and paper were also requested at several elementary schools, especially in relation to copying needs associated with the new Benchmark Advanced Series. The most significant concern voiced, however, was space. Space for classrooms, space for exceptional education programming, and space needed for intervention services. Of course, the recently completed CCPS demographic and facility study outlined growth, building capacity being reached, aging infrastructure, and high amounts of deferred maintenance expenses. Tonight's RRMM presentation will highlight these findings and share with CCPS stakeholders four recommendations for board and community consideration. A few final comments from our teaching staff included ensuring that K-one report cards are fully aligned with standards, revisiting the need to send progress reports to all, and a request to print hard copies of report cards for families to increase awareness and engagement. Secondary and elementary principals will assess the feasibility of this request. Lastly, there was a call for targeted professional learning experiences for our encore teachers, art, music, library, PE, et cetera. Liaisons will collaborate closely with the instructional leadership team in the spring to plan relevant summer learning opportunities. And our next steps. The next steps in the process will include hosting salad with the superintendent sessions in the spring as well as developing the CCPS twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Recruitment and Retention Flyer. This flyer will incorporate many of the valuable recommendations that emerged from these insightful meetings. Are there any questions?
Any board members have questions?
Jeans?
Dr. Calverick's very excited about that one. Do you detect her sarcasm? While I have an old-school mentality, as I believe many of our board members do, it is a free benefit of which many of our staff members would go to bat for. So, we are going to have further conversation about this. It has been a trend or a theme for approximately three years now, and some of our neighboring divisions permit this. And believe it or not, it is very appealing to those that are on the floor, in the grind, in the trench. I see some head nods from some of our folks in the back of the room, so to be revisited.
Any other board members?
Just one quick question.
Okay, oh, sure, go ahead.
When do you anticipate the CCPS twenty-five, twenty-six recruitment and retention flyer to be created?
We are currently working on that. We hope to have that out next month, or typically in the.
The recruit, let's be sure we're talking about the correct document. So, we do have all of our recruitment fairs and all of our endeavors outlined, and Ms. Tucker is equipped to provide that in the next Friday update. But this actual recruitment retention flyer is more of a communication tool to our current staff and for future staff, but much of what we are able to operationalize is dependent upon funding. So, while we may have, let's say if there are ten enhanced benefits, we may have certainty about five. There could be five that are lingering dependent upon the outcome of the budget. So, I'll leave that kind of with an open-ended response.
Thank you. I was wondering if this particular document would be critical to our efforts to recruit new staff, so that's why I was trying to gauge the timeline in which this document would be created.
Absolutely.
Can I reattack? One thing. Is it too early to determine the student's response to the bench, the new benchmark appropriate? I see the teachers and support staff like it a lot. Have we seen any initial response from students yet?
Absolutely. I'll call Ms. Haley to the podium, who can articulate some of the, I guess, more qualitative observations, but also quantitative data that can be presented in the next month or so by our efficacy studies in partnership with our vendor.
Yes, so in partnership with Plan Forward, they have completed their second survey with our staff, just looking at the efficiency as well as the effectiveness of the rollout of Benchmark. We are seeing our students who are showing some growth, moderate to high growth, and we're very pleased with that. There will be a spring survey as well from Plan Forward that we will put out. And I'm not so sure if we are going to also send that same for survey out to families, but we will have conversations about that and make some decisions. Okay?
Okay, okay. I would just, and mine is not in response to yours. I think it's a fantastic program, the soup to the soup. I think it's, it's done very well. And I, I do have a concern about the jeans. I'm old-school, I guess, but I will just say this. Jeans are very expensive, first of all. I, I did not realize that the jeans sell for a hundred dollars, ninety-nine dollars. So, I mean, you know, yeah, and they are very expensive. But, but I think the other thing, my concern is I view us as being professionals. We demand respect. We demand money. We want to be paid for our education. We want to be paid for our skills. And we want to be treated as professionals. And like it or not, we have to dress like professionals. And I'm not saying that everybody has to go out and buy a three-piece suit or every lady has to go to Macy's and buy whatever. I understand that. My wife goes there. But my point is, I don't want people to look at us as not being professional. We compare ourselves to attorneys. We compare ourselves to doctors. We compare ourselves to business leaders. And unfortunately, well, depending on the way you look at it, most of those professions don't wear jeans to work. Now, I, I don't, I don't think that you, I have a problem if you want to do it once a week or if you want to, you know, do it once a month or have jean day or whatever. And it's not my decision alone. But I do want us to understand that we are professionals, and you are treated the way you look. Most parents who come into our buildings aren't coming in there to tell us what a good job we're doing. I wish they were. And when they see us, half the battle is fought right then. And as I tell my students and my son, you only get one time to make a first impression. Don't blow it. Having said that, unless there are other comments, we'll move on.
Thank you.
The next agenda item, monthly revenues and ADM update.
I did not wear jeans on one of the snow days. Correct that. I will not wear jeans again on one of the snow days. And even again, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, Dr. Calverick. I'll be presenting the December fiscal year twenty-five financials this evening. Operating revenues for December were three point, three point two million, with year-to-date revenues of twenty-nine point two million, or forty-six percent. Special fund revenues for December were six hundred and three thousand dollars, with year-to-date revenues of three point nine million, or thirty-eight point eight percent. Total revenues for all funds for December were three point eight million, with year-to-date totals of thirty-three point one million, or forty-five point one five percent. You will note that revenues received in both Esser McKinney-Vento and School Improvement Grant funding far exceed the initial appropriation due to additional grant requests that were approved for those funding sources. As long as budget authority in its, in its entirety is not exceeded, a budget amendment is not required. Operating expenditures for December were six million, with year-to-date expenditures of twenty-seven million, or forty-two point six six percent. Special funds expenditures for December were four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, with four point seven million year-to-date, or forty-seven point seven eight percent. Total expenditures for all funds for December were six point four million, with year-to-date totals of thirty-one point eight million, or forty-three point thirty-five percent. I'd be happy to take any questions from the board on the December fiscal year twenty-five financials. Okay, I'll move to ADM. I'll be presenting the average daily membership update for December twenty-twenty-four. Average daily membership is determined by dividing the total aggregate daily membership by the numbers of days schools in session during the school year. December twenty-twenty-four ADM is four thousand three hundred thirty-two point four six six. At the December nine Board of Education meeting, we shared two contributing record-keeping factors in Power School that led to a positive shift in ADM. One had to do with adjusting to elementary school calendars in Power School to accurately reflect the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. While the second reason had to do with correctly adjusting the last day of school for some students who attended summer school from June first of last year to May twenty-third. Following the December nine Board of Education meeting, Power School completed a membership support ticket that was closed out on December twentieth. The result of this ticket was a positive increase in ADM for Bowling Green Elementary School. As such, the Bowling Green ADM has been properly adjusted from August through December. Based on these factors, the year-to-day ADM. over the budgeted ADM target of four thousand three hundred and twenty. That's right, big cheers. I'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Board members have questions? If not, thank you very much. It's always good to be over.
Appreciate it.
Okay. The next agenda item, recommendations to be presented by RRM with the result of the Facility Study and Demographics, Demographic Study, Marcia Stevens.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Mark Pross, President and CEO of RRM Architects, and he is going to have the discussion of the master plan. On September 9th, he presented to the school board meeting the facility condition assessment. On October 7th, RMM and their partner, Future Think, presented the demographic study. And tonight, we're excited to have Mr. Pross return to us and present the master plan options that have been derived from these two prior very extensive studies, and he will be presenting us four options tonight.
I love that, excited. Thank you. Thank you, Marcia. Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, Dr. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to share with you Phase 3, the options recommendations portion of the facilities master plan. As Marcia indicated, we did come and provide previously the facility condition assessments as well as demographics studies, and we thought tonight we would recap those two meetings briefly before we run into the options recommendations. So, with regard to the facilities conditions assessments, the week of spring break, '24, April 2nd through the 4th, we conducted all of the site visits for the existing schools and buildings. We documented their present or current condition as of those dates in order to kind of forecast funding requirements. Then we developed FCI, or Facility Condition Index scores, for each of those schools and buildings, and they ranged from poor to excellent. The majority of the deferred maintenance monies were attributed to aged buildings, which really sixty-seven percent of that was attributed to plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and roofing infrastructure and systems. The remaining thirty-three percent was a lot of the interior, aesthetics, ADA code, safety issues, structural, et cetera. We presented those findings, as Ms. Stevens indicated, on September 9th during the school board meeting, and then we amended those assessments and the deferred maintenance schedules late summer after the work that McClure had completed on several of the buildings. So, these are, this is a representation of the revised deferred maintenance dollar values and the FCI scores for each of the schools. And it's important to note that the deferred maintenance is really representative of only the very poor and the poor condition ratings for each of those buildings. So, it's a three-year, it encapsulates a three-year window, 2024, 2025, and 2026. And then the FCI scores are calculated by taking each of the deferred maintenance values that's up on the screen for that three-year period and dividing it by the current, in today's dollars, replacement value of each of those buildings. Then for enrollment projections study of Phase 2, we presented on, during the October 7th school board meeting, and Future Think provided a projection, enrollment projections analysis based on a number of different facets, historical enrollment, birth data, population estimates, excuse me, projected residential development, as well as housing data and yield rates were utilized. Enrollment historically had increased about two hundred and seven students, or five percent over the last ten years. Thank you. And I think it's very important to note that over just the last three years, the number of students increased four hundred and thirty-three, by four hundred and thirty-three, or over ten percent over the last three years. The moderate range projected by Future Think for enrollment increase over the next ten years is approximately eight hundred and sixteen students, or an additional eighteen percent above and beyond today's current enrollment figures.
Is that projection based on the number of houses being built?
That is a portion of, it's a, it's a, it's not houses being built, but it's permits that have been pulled, and then taking into consideration land that has been zoned for residential development. Yes, sir. So, then we looked at the existing capacities of each of the schools and their current enrollment, and you can see, the first column is the current enrollment this year, current capacity of that school, and you can see that Lewis &amp; Clark is already over capacity by sixty-four students. And then over that ten-year period in the far right column, it will show you the number of projected classrooms that will be needed at each of those schools to accommodate the enrollment growth at each, in each of those schools and their districts within that ten-year period. It's pretty significant when you look at that eighteen percent increase over ten years and the number of classrooms that will be needed to house those students. And so, those classroom, the number of classrooms at each of those schools was actually the basis for options development and looking at all the options that we might be able to make use of to address the enrollment, the projected enrollment increases over the next ten years. So, options recommendations. As stated earlier, we have four to present this evening. We have talked through with the school administration, school board, as well as ourselves, multiple options, and it's very important to note that the bulleted items up here are all of the criteria that we really heavily evaluated and prioritized with regard to the options that are being shared this evening. We looked at the anticipated future student enrollment growth, we looked at redistricting versus non-redistricting of school boundaries, we looked at the attempt to alleviate overcrowding in the schools, right sizing the schools per best practices, reducing and/or eliminating both current and future potential deferred maintenance costs, development of a new transportation center, as well as the design and construction durations that would take place for each of these options. So, option one, we have a new fourth elementary school to address the elementary projections, a small addition to Caroline Middle School, a small addition to Caroline High School, the purchase and renovation of a vacant available building, and then a new transportation So, the new elementary school, we have assumed that it would house about four hundred and fifty students, that will take care of those enrollment projections over that ten-year period. It would be a pre-K through five and be approximately fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, and assume that it would be positioned on land already owned by the school board. With regard to Caroline Middle School, I don't know why some of these things aren't showing up, but the middle school have about a thirty-nine hundred square foot addition, small, about four classrooms, with a seven hundred square foot per classroom assumption, and then some site allowances in the cost estimate as well. The Caroline High School addition would be about sixty-eight hundred square foot, representing about seven hundred classrooms at seven hundred per square foot. The purchased and vacant, the purchased and renovated vacant available building is seventy-one, a little over seventy-one thousand square feet, and you can see the breakdown that would, would take place in that renovation. We would look at moving the administration or school board office into that building, maintenance facility as well, Lotus Academy at roughly sixty-two hundred square feet, the governor's school, Chesapeake Bay Governor's School at about seventy-five hundred square feet, and then there would be about twenty-three thousand or so square feet that would be remaining in that building that could be used by the county for community center space. And then on that same site, we could easily locate a new fifteen thousand square foot transportation building, once the, once the vacant building site is acquired. So, in summary, for option one, breakdown in the first column is the total estimated project construction costs for each of those additions, new school, as well as the new transportation building totaling about fifty-five million dollars, and then the deferred maintenance over a four-year period totaling just under thirty million dollars. And it's important to note that the other deferred maintenance line item is significantly smaller in this scenario because we have located Lotus Academy, we've relocated the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School and the school board office to the vacant available property, which then eliminates the need for the deferred maintenance on those three buildings. And then the total costs are about eighty-five million to do all that work. Option two also includes a new fourth elementary school, but also a new school board office on the same site, a new transportation building, again, a small addition to the middle school, and then a larger addition to Caroline High School. So, the new fourth elementary school, again, would be the same size and capacity with regard to four hundred and fifty students, but the school board office would be located on the same property, roughly twenty-five thousand square feet, and would house both the administration and the maintenance building functions. And it again assumes that this property is owned by the school board. New transportation building would be located on a property that's owned by the school board, location to be determined. The middle school addition is the same as in option one, roughly thirty-nine hundred square feet, and then the high school addition would be substantially larger, little over twenty thousand square feet, to house not only the seven classrooms to take care of the enrollment projections, but it would also house the Lotus Academy and Chesapeake Bay Governor's School at roughly sixty-two hundred and seven, seventy-five hundred square feet each. And then the costs for those, similar to the last chart, the total project construction costs are in the first column at sixty-three million, the deferred maintenance thirty million, and the total for this option is ninety-three million. Same deferred maintenance for the school board office, the maintenance building, the transportation building, Lotus and Chesapeake Bay, those buildings deferred maintenance would be waived or eliminated. Option three is to purchase or renovate the vacant building, build a new transportation building, a small addition to Caroline Middle School, and a large addition to Caroline High School. Purchase and renovation of the vacant building, again, is seventy-one thousand seven hundred feet, but this would incorporate not only the administration building and maintenance building functions, but a pre-K center, and the pre-K center would be roughly twenty-six thousand square feet with eighteen classrooms, and this would provide some alleviating of space needs in each of the existing three elementary schools. And then you can see the community space, there is about eleven thousand square foot that would be remaining for community space. It provides for elementary school growth, but one consideration that needs to be thought through is the geographic location being centered in the school district and how pre-K three-and-four-year-olds are transported to this centralized site. The new transportation building is very similar to the previous option, it's about a fifteen thousand square foot to be built and placed on school board-owned land. The addition to the middle school is the same, it's thirty-nine hundred square feet, roughly four classrooms, and then the addition to the high school is similar to option two, which encompasses the seven classrooms for growth, the Lotus Academy, and Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. And the cost summary for option three totals a little over sixty-four million dollars, thirty-four million of that being new construction or renovations additions, and then deferred maintenance at thirty million. Option four provides for small additions to each of the existing elementary schools, the purchase and renovation of a vacant available building, a new transportation building, a small addition to the middle school, and a large addition to the high school. So, the small addition at Bowling Green would encompass five classrooms, roughly nine hundred square feet each, for a total of sixty-three hundred square foot additions. At Lewis &amp; Clark, at Lewis &amp; Clark, we would need to add approximately nine classrooms, totaling a little over eleven thousand three hundred square feet, and it's important to note that that school is already fairly sized fairly largely, and adding roughly nine classrooms could equate to somewhere between a hundred and sixty to two hundred additional students at that school, and that's probably a little over a twenty percent increase at that school, just keeping that in mind. Madison would require four classrooms totaling a little over five thousand square feet. The purchase and renovation of the vacant building would house administration and maintenance functions with a significantly larger space for community center usage, but reducing the renovation costs for the vacant building. The new transportation building would be similar to the other options placed on own, school-owned land. The middle school would be very similar as well, thirty-nine hundred square foot for four classroom additions, and then the high school addition would be similar to the last option, which would encompass not only the seven classrooms for growth, but then also the Lotus Academy and Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. And the cost summary for option four totals little over forty-three million for total project construction costs, twenty-nine million for deferred maintenance, for a total of seventy-three point seven million. So, options summary, just to recap again, yeah, next one. So, option one totals roughly eighty-five million, and that's all in deferred maintenance and total project costs. Option two, just over ninety-three million. Option three, sixty-four point seven million, and option four, seventy-three point seven I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll finish us up with some next steps before we go into any questions that you may have. This is not an all-inclusive of next steps by any means, but it's getting our wheels turning as we're going down this process. We thank RMM for their partnership, and we met with county admin on the facility condition assessment results on September 27th. We met with them on the demographic study results and the CIP budget on December 17th. We are wanting to have a joint board meeting to share all this information, the facility condition assessment, the demographic study, and these recommendations with the board of supervisors, so that date is to be determined at this time. We have a parent advisory meeting that we encourage any parents and community members to come out and join us. We will have RMM present. It is January 27th at CMS at 5:00 PM. We will conduct appraisals on other school-owned property and... And, uh, we are in contact with the appraisal company. We will host community meetings. We will conduct a community survey. And at the end of all this, we will have a recommendation of the final option for CIP submission, um, for financing if we have to head into bond referendum, et cetera. So, um, certainly, next steps is not all-inclusive. We have a lot ahead of us on this project. And moving forward, we think RRMM for their, um, all of their due diligence in giving us the detailed studies that we've had so far. And we welcome any questions that you have at this point.
One, I don't think there are questions, um, regarding the fourth.
Uh, I was just gonna, first of all, thank the board for this because I'd make it a matter of public record that we have met regarding the, um, the study for demographics, for the building study. We met in work session and went over all this for, I know, an hour. And then when we did the VSB A annual convention, I, I think we met for like three or four hours then and, and brought all of this, uh, up. So, it, we have, I feel like this board has put more time on this than probably anything that I've ever seen us do, just to make sure that we have everything aligned correctly. My question is, um, with the Lewis and Clark, because I know you've already mentioned that it's a, it's a, it's a big school. And my understanding was that we could not build anything there. Is it, is there, um, is that reasonable then? Regardless of, I know if we add twenty percent there, but is it still permissible? Is there space available in that land provided for us to build, to add the additions there? That's my only question.
Yes, and if we can go back to the, um, the image with the school on it, we have laid out a several, several, uh... Yes, right here. So, this, this is laid out, uh, representative location on where the additional classrooms could be located on the site in terms of allowing enough space, as well as providing the functionality.
And is it, is there a, um, there's like a playground over there right now, correct?
There is.
So, that, then that would have to get moved someplace.
A portion of that would be relocated, yes.
Okay.
But the cost of that is significantly less than trying to fit the building around it.
All right, thank you, that's it.
Other board members?
Yeah, if I may, uh, first, certainly, thank you for the effort. And I would agree with my colleagues, this is a project that we have spent a considerable amount of time on. And we are going to considerable, we are going to, um, dedicate a considerable amount of more time on this primarily because of the, the extensive price tag associated with whatever option is selected. I welcome the opportunity and I thank you for the opportunity to ensure that, uh, our, uh, citizens will have the opportunity to, um, to provide comment, uh, thoughts and ideas on, on that, as well as, you know, you know, the community as a whole. So, uh, we have miles to go before we, uh, before we slap the table on anything in particular. And I welcome the opportunity to have those types of discussions so that we can be as transparent and as inclusive as possible for all, uh, for all input. So, I, I, again, thank you for your, your effort and RRMM's diligence in this. And Marsha, for your, uh, continued effort. And I look forward to continuing on this, uh, this journey.
Thank you, other board members?
Mr. Chairman, um, I wanted to say thank you as well. And this is, like Sean said, um, it's gonna be one of the biggest decisions that will probably be made in this generation of board leadership. Um, I did wanna pu- point out for public knowledge the intentionality in which we're approaching this, to first look at what we currently have with doing the facility study. And I'm restating this because sometimes we can be so technical and complicated that the layperson in the community gets lost in the, the jumble. So, I'm gonna attempt to just make it simple. Looking at what we have is first, looking at where, what properties we own, what we don't own, and resolving that as a question. Where are the borders of our, um, current land, um, that we have in, in our ownership? And then looking at the demographic, because I know the question that's gonna come up is why potentially in these different, um, options that have come forward, there's an elementary school? Why is there not a suggestion for a new middle school or new high school? So, I think it's important to understand where the growth is, um, in terms of our age demographic. And then the third piece is that rubric, um, that's on slide eleven. Because a lot of times when communities have this conversation, it becomes political. Or it becomes deeply rooted in personal opinion. Um, and so, I'd like, as a matter of public record, for our community to know that on slide eleven, we went through what is the rubric of decision-making to look at what's a good option, so that we are not posturing, oh, I want a school in my division, or, you know, we got growth over here. Um, we really were intentional about making this an equitable process. Um, and then the last comment that I would make is for our community members who are here, thank you for being here. Um, and for those who are watching on Facebook and to challenge all of us, we have to make sure that our citizens know what's going on. Um, this, we cannot afford for our community to be unaware of the discussion or the opportunity to give their voice. Um, so, I would rather have a lot of input upfront in the decision-making process than for this train to get way down the, the station and then have a lot of issue at the end. So, I wanted my comments to be a matter of public record. And I wanted to say thank you because you have taken the vision of this board of what we needed, where we are, and where we feel like we need to be better equipped. And you have come back to the table each time with the answer to our questions. So, thank you for your patience and your flexibility and all of those sorts of things, so, um...
It has been a pleasure.
Yes, sir, it's a big, this is a big deal, guys, so, um, looking forward to continued conversation.
Other board members?
Uh, just one, one question, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, just have one quick question regarding option two. Um, I noticed that, and this is, uh, a question of clarity, uh, more so for the community. Uh, option two lists the new transportation building as in other, other three options, but it doesn't reference the purchase or renovation of the available property. So, if option two is selected, would a decision need to be made as to where to house or where to build that new transportation building?
Yes, yes, we have not site-selected anything, but have, but have assumed that it would be on either school board or county-owned land. So, there's no purchase of land, there's no land acquisition costs factored in.
And that's, that's the differentiator between option two and one?
All, all of the transportation buildings have been calculated the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Kevrick, um, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir, I have a comment, and then I have a couple of questions to pose. Um, my comment is understanding our why. And I wanna be very clear and succinct, as Dr. Rollins Fellows said, let's cut to the chase. We have documented growth, we see that, we see that throughout our county. We also have a number of approved lots that are not yet built out. And so, we can, with a scientific formula, predict what those households or rooftops may bring to the table in terms of students in the future for us. We have documented exceptional education increases. You heard tonight, the growth, eighteen percent in special education from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. Students that are coming to our school division have high needs. And some of those needs require specialized programs, which require new classrooms, new staff members. And then, thirdly, the Virginia Department of Education, rightfully so, has requested that school divisions begin innovative thinking around interventions and programs and staff that are needed to provide those interventions. All of these things drive the need for space. So, let's be certain to understand, it's not solely about the number of new families or new students that are coming into the division, but it is absolutely exacerbated in a positive way by our diversifying needs. And so, we need to be able to have equity in our facilities to ensure that our students are receiving what they need in a high-quality learning environment and our staff has a teaching and work environment that reflects the professional standards that we uphold in Caroline County. So, I just wanted to make sure the why is fully understood. And I've got three questions for you, Mr. Probst, are you ready? Why is transportation so critical? I've noted that in all four recommendations, there's a new transportation center. And I see Mr. Child smirking at me from the back of the room.
Well, first and foremost, I would say that your existing transportation building has an extremely high FCI score and requires a significant amount of deferred maintenance. And when you start to look at repairing that and putting the money into fixing up a building that's already undersized, under-dimensioned, um, it just makes sense to build a new, new transportation building. Right-size it, uh, right widths for the types of vehicles you're gonna service, et cetera.
Thank you, we actually have, the majority of our fleet is seventy-seven passenger buses. And we have one active bay that can service those buses. And so, in order to keep those wheels on the roads and make sure that safety remains the number-one priority, our mechanics need the tools and resources to ensure that safety level, so appreciate that. And then you alluded to my second question. Deferred maintenance can be a foreign concept. Can you really explain? I think when you say the building's Lotus Academy, which is Old Lady Smith, when you talk about the school board office, when you talk about where CBGS is in the annex building, and you talk about the maintenance building, those are all some of our most, um, seasoned buildings, I'll say. So, talk about deferred maintenance so the layperson can understand exactly what that means.
Okay, so deferred maintenance is, there, most building systems have a typical estimated useful life expectancy. Uh, we'll just say for, let's say HVAC equipment, it might be forty years. Items that hit the deferred maintenance schedule have either outlasted or are projected to be outlasting, um, their estimated useful life and/or have been under-maintained over a period of time. And so, they are, those, those building systems or pieces of equipment are falling into, in the, in those figures that we showed up there, just in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six years, needing significant replacement.
So, more costly than potentially the purchase of an existing building that could be renovated? Or that might be an unfair statement?
I don't know if it'd be more costly, but you have to, I think it's prudent to look at the value of the money that you're putting into a, an existing school to, to repair or upgrade the deferred maintenance, and then the year it was built and the educational capacities and programmatic capacities that are also needed in them.
Fair, thank you so much, I appreciate that. And then my third question is, we have four recommendations, and not one of them outlines a new middle school or a new high school. You mentioned that we looked at a large number of recommendations. Could you help our community understand why maybe we don't have a middle school or high school noted as one of our recommendations for a new build?
Sure, so, we did, we did originally have eight total options that we, that the school administration, as well as the school board, vetted. Um, a new middle school and a new high school were both two of those four options that were removed, um, from the recommendations. And predominantly, both of those were removed because of the sheer cost magnitude. Um, those two, if I can remember right, were upwards of a hundred million, where these, the, the highest is ninety-three million. And the second was the duration that it would take to not only design, but construct those schools. And the thought was, is that if we were gonna build, for an example, a new high school, we would build a new high school, we would shift all the high school students into the new high school, then we would renovate the existing high school to become the new middle, the new renovated middle school. And then we would go back to the middle school and renovate it for a new combo school board office slash elementary school. So, it would still take care of all the enrollment projection needs, but the time to, from starting to design the new high school all the way through renovating the, the existing high school to renovating the, um, existing middle school for a new elementary school was probably six to eight years. And you're well into, almost at the end of that ten-year projection.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I have one closing statement that I just want to point out. As you noted with the rubric that was referred to, we were very intentional in bringing forward options that did not call for redistricting, as well as those that did call for redistricting. We know that that is a practice that can be emotional. People are attached to their home schools, and we understand why because they each have their own unique spirit and personality. And the idea of having to transition your child or children to a new building can be intimidating. But we wanted you to know that that was something that we really entertained and we're very careful to ensure we brought forward, um, a combination of opportunities for consideration. So, with that, I'll yield the floor.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Certainly.
Going back to the deferred maintenance, help me understand this. I agree with everything, you know, we, we, we go to new because it's gonna be more cost-effective to build new than to... I, I'm with you on that. But if a facility remains on our ledger, it hasn't been sold, it's ours. The responsibility for upkeep of that facility, does that not remain with us until it's off the ledger?
Yes, if you're making use of it. It could be on your ledger and sitting vacant and mothballed, and you don't have to put the deferred maintenance into it.
Yes, but then it's also a faci- um, this is a necessary debate, I'm just saying, but it, it's still...
It is still owned by the school division.
It's still owned by the school, so it's not like we can completely, uh, ride it off, you know, because there's still gonna be some responsibilities that we, as good stewards of, 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 uh, the property, you know, have to maintain, you know, safety, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I, I've just always been kind of a little, uh, torn with that.
I think there's options, though, I mean, you, the, the school division, the school board could gift it back to the county, and then it's relinquished from any deferred maintenance, sell the, potentially sell the property. But I think there's some options.
So, yeah, and I agree with you. But I guess my point really is, until we are, we, we, you know, execute those options, it's still, you know, it's still our, on our, our books, right?
Depends on how much you wanna put into them.
Right, okay, thanks.
Uh, I just have one final question. Um, given the funds that we have spent in the past in refurbishing buildings and building new buildings and whatever, when we look at either of these four options and we choose whatever we choose, how long will it be before we need to go through this process again? Or, uh, based on the growth that we think we're going to get, how long are these buildings good for, uh, before we have to do something else?
Well, I would love to give you a finite number, but I will tell you that deferred maintenance just goes on forever. So, um, now, will there be significant, uh, pockets of time where there's a lot less deferred maintenance that's required? Absolutely. I think it, it'll all depend on the extent and, and the timing of when some of these deferred maintenance items are done. If, if the majority of the items that are listed right now in years twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are addressed, you'll probably have seventy-five to eighty percent of the deferred maintenance addressed for a decent period of time.
Mr. Probst, I'm wondering if Mr. Taylor was actually referring to the renovated building and the new building. What is the time span that we could anticipate that those new changes would meet our needs? And so, I think it would be, um, good to share that these are, are predictions, not predictions, but calculations based on modern... not predictions, but calculations based on moderate growth data versus extreme growth data. And maybe you can expand on that, because I feel like I'm at the max of my knowledge.
Okay. So let me make sure I'm understanding what, so you're saying that if we took the existing middle school and we fully renovated it to make it a school board office and a elementary school, how long would that renovated school last?
Right.
Predictably?
If we choose one of the four options that we have outlined, will that guarantee us that we can meet our needs for however many years?
Ten years, five years?
I would say if you, whichever option you pick, if you do all the deferred maintenance that's listed in the options, you've got a good ten to fifteen years before you really hit anything of significance.
Okay.
Because we won't have the money or the bonds to do anything.
That's what I'm saying.
I didn't interpret that question to be about finances or building from a structural standpoint. But when we start talking about capacity, not building a building that will be at capacity in two years, this is based upon ten-year projections, correct?
That's correct.
So when you talk about capacity, we should not max the space out based on moderate projections for ten years.
But I think it's important to note this, are you able to pull the capacity calculations sheet? It's about in the middle, yeah. It's important to note that we're saying that there's an eight-hundred-plus student growth over a ten-year cycle. But when you look at the capacity calculations chart by school, I mean, you can see Lewis and Clark has already reached its capacity. It's in need of not necessarily nine classrooms right now, but at least two to three classrooms right now. And Madison is projected to hit in year twenty-six, twenty-seven. So these aren't, it's important to note that these are not all at the end of ten years, these enrollment projections. Some of them are hitting individual schools much sooner than that ten-year period.
But I think that when you go to the community and ask them for seventy-three million dollars, a county, a rural county like Caroline, that's a whole lot of money.
Absolutely.
And I am certainly not one to think that we need to sacrifice children. I don't care what it costs. I think we need to do what we need to do to provide a quality education for our children. And I say that, I've always believed that. But at the same time, we have to be realistic. If you, if you're going to, if we're going to go to the community and ask for that kind of money, we need to make certain, or as certain as we can, that we don't have to go back to them in five years and ask for another forty million dollars, or another, whatever it costs. And I can hear, that's one of the things I can hear already. You know, we refurbished Bowling Green Elementary. We built Lewis and Clark. You know, even, of course, this middle school is, you know, that's been a while. But I mean, we've done some substantial renovations to our buildings. And they're still good, and they're still serving our purpose. But, and I know it's not going to end, this is never going to end. We're always going to have to educate our children, and we're always going to have to deal with it. But we need to, that won't be any money. I can tell you, if we get seventy-three million dollars, we won't get no more money in my time. And I plan to live a long time. So that's my thought.
Well, and I think there's other components to it, too, right? The, if you have tens of thousands of new residential homes built that are driving the need for additional capacity or additional school, there should be increased tax base. There should be some maybe proffers, I don't know how Caroline operates, but there are a number that levy proffers on the developers before they can even build a site. And they typically earmark a very large percentage of that money to go towards educational facilities. So there's a number of options, but I will tell you that every school division that we talk with that has significant enrollment projections always faces the dynamic of, do we build it so we're ready when they come, or do we wait until they're already here, and then there's a problem? So, and it all boils down to money.
Okay. Well, I certainly thank you. It's been a good experience. And I thank the board as well, because we know we still have a lot of work to do. But we've also done a lot of work as well. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda. Agenda item number eight, the consent agenda, A through E. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, check. It's moved and properly second, that we will approve the consent agenda as presented. We will call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. This takes us to our citizen comment period. The Caroline County School Board welcomes public comment during the regular meeting and public hearings. Speakers may address an item on the board meeting agenda or an item not on the agenda during this time. All comments should address a matter related to Caroline County Public Schools. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. Once you see the red light on the traffic light positioned in front of the clerk, please make your last statement. The school board chair is responsible for recognizing all speakers, for maintaining proper order, and for adhering to the time limit stated above. The chair is authorized to stop and/or have removed any speaker who uses language that is obscene, constitutes fighting words, true threats, or solicitation to commit crimes and incites immediate lawless action, imminent lawless actions. Moreover, the chair may stop or have, or have removed any person who disrupts the orderly functioning of the meeting by making loud, boisterous, or threatening comments. Once you come to the lectern, if you have not signed in with the clerk, please complete the appearance request form, state your name and your district. At this time, the clerk will call those who have signed up prior to the meeting. Hearing none, are there any citizens in the audience that would like to make a citizen comment at this time? Are there any citizens in the audience who would like to make a public comment at this time? One last request, are there any citizens who would like to make a public comment at this time? Since there are no additional comments at this time, the citizen comment period is closed. We have no action items tonight, as I understand it, or no new business. So that takes us to board committee reports and comments. Maybe I'll start with our student, if that's okay with you. Okay.
First, I would like to start by saying Happy New Year to everyone. So some highlights from December include Spirit Week, which I was very happy to see the amount of participation from our school and how much fun the students have with that. The high school also hosted an in-school basketball game where Caroline's varsity girls' basketball team plays against Essex. Essex. We also had winter break that got a little extended, but I, for one, am very happy to be back. Some upcoming events in January include basketball night for seniors on the sixteenth. And I'm also going to be planning visits to visit the elementary schools and also the middle school, as well as getting my survey out very soon for my plan. Finally, we are beginning our new semester, and I'm very excited to see what it holds for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, maybe we'll go to this end, starting with Sean.
Thank you. No committee reports, because we really haven't had anything because of the break. Happy New Year as well to everyone. I was able to go to the Caroline High School swim meet the day of, the last day that we had school last year, which was a lot of fun to see a lot of those kids. I wanted to take this time to thank the board for the opportunity to serve. As I know I've shared this a lot, but I'm starting my fourteenth year on the Caroline County School Board. Fourteen years. I have served as the board chair for two years and the vice chair the year before that. And I am a firm believer that there is benefit and change. I think that the new chair and the vice chair are going to get a new skill set, and definitely appreciate me from sitting in that hot seat the last couple of years. But I look forward to the change in leadership and the opportunity to see where they can take us as we continue on this journey. I'm very, very pleased with the selection of the gentleman that we have there. It was a privilege for me to nurture Calvin and to help him along, you know, change his diaper when he needed it, and help him, give him his passy, hold his hand when we cross the street, teach him not to run in the parking lot. But he has been, truthfully, he has been my right-hand man and calling when I vent, and he always answers and listens and some, well, I think he does. He always says, "Yes, sir, yes, sir." But I really do look forward, guys, to where we're headed with you at the helm. And I challenge all of you to keep me in check. That's it.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Oh, you're fine. Happy New Year to everyone. I hope everyone had a really good break. I want to thank Mr. Kelly for his leadership this past year, especially as a new board member. I texted many, many questions to him that he just responded to almost immediately. And congratulations to Mr. Taylor and Mr. Fortune, our new chair and vice chair. December was a really busy month, as we were wrapping up 2004 and the first semester. I was able to attend the CHS theater performance of The Outsiders, which was an amazing show, and the students did a really, really great work. So they should feel really proud of themselves, and thank you to Ms. Tingler for all her hard work. I also attended the Winter Chorus Concert, which was performed by both the middle and high school chorus. And they did a great job, and it ended in a really fun sing-along that I just think brought so much festive spirit as we were leaving. I also wanted to thank our maintenance staff for all the hard work they did during the snow. It really was, allowed us to get back into the building as soon as possible, so thank you for your hard work. And I hope that the students, teachers, staff, I really have best wishes for you as we enter into the second semester. Thank you.
Awesome. Happy New Year to everybody. Don't worry, Mr. Taylor, I got your back, because I changed Sean's diaper and gave him a passy. There you go. I got you. We really like each other, y'all. But I do want to say thank you, Mr. Kelly, for your leadership. I know that you were needed in a season, and you showed up, and you were present, and so I want to say thank you. I don't know if many people know that beyond Caroline County, you served regionally, and you served at the state level and at the federal level. And so, your work has not gone unnoticed. So thank you for that. Congratulations, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Fortune. I got your back. And Mrs. Sears, you can kick him under the table if you need to. I commission you with that. Anywho, I did not have any board committee meetings in December, but there are several things coming up in January. On Thursday and Friday, I will be in Birmingham for the COSBA Leadership Conference. The Capitol Conference is on the twenty-seventh. In Richmond, where we will be meeting with our legislators on the twenty-eighth, we will be hosting, and Dr. Calverick will be training, a workshop for new school board members. Mr. Kelly and I will be going to DC February the third and the fourth for federal advocacy. And then following that on February, I believe it's the sixth, I'll be attending the Virginia High School League meeting. And so, those are my committee reports. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too join in wishing everyone a very Happy New Year. I hope you had the opportunity to enjoy the holiday season with your family and friends and receive some modicum of rest and rejuvenation. Special thank you and shout-out to our transportation, maintenance, and facilities folks who played a part in not only going out during the storm to assess the conditions of the roads, et cetera, but also for our facilities and maintenance folks for making sure that our facilities are safe upon our return. So thank you so much for all the work during this period of inclement weather. I want to thank my colleagues on the board for your show of support and confidence in me through your election of myself as the vice chair of the board. I do not take this privilege to serve in this leadership capacity lightly, and I definitely pledge my support to you, Mr. Taylor, as chair. You know, I'm just a phone call, text, email away, sir. I would be remiss if I didn't take time to thank Mr. Kelly for your service, not only on the board, for all these many years, but also for the last two years' service as chair of our board. And I personally want to thank you for all that you did in conjunction with Dr. Calverick and the leadership team for your efforts regarding our onboarding as new board members. I really appreciate all the support that you've provided me during my first year on the board. Since our last board meeting, I had the opportunity to attend to play The Outsiders as Mrs. Sears alluded to. Kudos, a great job to the cast of The Outsiders. And I would be remiss if I didn't give special kudos to Mrs. Sears, whose daughter shined in her leading role as Pony Boy. I truly enjoyed that experience, and Mrs. Sears, I know you and your husband are very proud. During the winter break, I also had a chance to attend the Lady Cavaliers Carolina Holiday Hoop Basketball Tournament, where our varsity Lady Cavaliers garnered second place in the tournament. So, great job, ladies. Some of the upcoming events that I'll be attending includes attending the fourth session of the Virginia Association of Schools Superintendent's Genative AI Learning Year, where we're working collaboratively as a region to develop some guidelines surrounding the use of genitive AI. And also, I'm looking forward to attending the VSBAC Capitol Conference with my colleagues later this month. So with that, Mr. Chair, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Dr. Hubbard?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I always thought, you know, with the new year, we have new opportunities. New opportunities to continue serving our communities, most importantly, serving the students of this school division. And everything that we do that enhances their futures is a plus, and that's, you know, that's the new opportunities that we should look to exploit. I would, you know, again, send kudos out to the principals, you know, with the Governor's Appreciation Week. Your stories, your journeys are difficult. We know this. Not many appreciate it, but we certainly appreciate what you're doing. Shout-out to Caroline Promise. Over the Christmas holidays, their partnership with businesses throughout the community brought a tremendous amount of cheer and goodhardiness to a lot of kids and families in our area. And that's, you know, led by Shamika Latni. And, you know, the, the school supports this, the community supports it, and it's just a great, a great thing to be a part of. You know, I would extend congratulatory thoughts and support to our new chair and vice chair. As we go forward, we'll continue to look at ways in which we can do great things together. And that's important, because that's what we're here for. So I appreciate, appreciate their service and their continuing support. Not a whole lot going on in December. We've had our rest. Now it's time to get back to work. So, you know, here we go. Giddy up. Thank you.
And thank you. I would just, as always, like to start by thanking- I would just, as always, like to start by thanking the staff and for the great work that you do. Caroline is a great county, it's a great school system, but it is because of the staff and the people that we are fortunate enough to have doing what they do to make it what it is. So I want to say thank you. My hats off to the principals in this day and time. With all that's going on in the school systems across this country, principals have a tough, tough job. And the fact that Caroline County has not endured any serious injuries. We've not had anything to happen in our schools that is most unfortunate. Is a tribute to our leadership, to the work that you do and to the involvement that you have with students and parents. The involvement that you have with the staff as well. So I can't say thank you enough. I would like to remind us that we are approaching African-American History Month. And I would ask that each of us would look around and see the various programs because they're going to be programs held across the county, across the state, that will be bringing positive attention to the achievements of Black Americans. And so African-American Month of February is the month where we shine, so to speak, or we bring to light those things that have happened that have helped us shape this country. So we need to make sure that we find one of those programs and maybe attend one of those programs or maybe go to the library and check out a book. Do something. And if you have children and you have grandchildren, do something with them to let them know what positive things have come from African-Americans. And in closing, I would say we are in this together. One of the great things that I like about working on this board is the expertise that's on this board. There's some smart folks up here. There are people who have special knowledge in different areas. And that's why we get along so well, because we recognize each other's strong points. And we aren't afraid to talk about our weaknesses. We put them together, we work together, we do what we have to do to get the job done. I thank this board for allowing me the privilege to continue to get the job done. I thank Sean for the good job that he did, supporting education in Caroline and working with this board. Thank you, Sean. And not only Sean, everybody up here. I thank you for what you've done to help to make this a success. And I just want to keep it going. Having said that, I will yield to the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. Ditto, ditto, ditto. Thank you to our Board of Supervisors and Caroline's Promise for the financial donation to allow all of our teachers to receive $150 of new supplies. Thank you to Chair Kelly, who served over the last 12 months with great efficiency and passion. Kudos to our principals for their daily work in breathing life into all of our goals and the goals of each of our individual buildings. The inclement weather team stellar this past week, in addition to the instructional support and operational support. But I do want to give a shout out to our families. Thank you for trusting the decision-making process that is extremely extensive and for your kindness that you demonstrated on Facebook. That is not the case in all divisions and it warms my heart to be associated with a community that questions when appropriate and writes thank yous when you feel a sense of gratitude. And that was definitely evident this past week. So thank you so much. It's a moment of pride. Also, I want to make sure that I extend again my congratulations and excitement to work in a different capacity with Mr. Fortune as vice chair and with Mr. Taylor as chair. And then I want to just highlight a few upcoming events. January 17th is our Division Spelling Bee right here in the CMS auditorium. We look forward to being hip to hip with those amazing alphabet masters. We also are looking forward to this Saturday, to the Athletes for Awareness. It is the MLK Classic. It's a basketball series that will be held at the high school. And our girls' team will be playing at 6:30 and our boys' team will be playing at 8 o'clock. So if you're looking for some local entertainment this Saturday evening, please come on out and support the Athletes for Awareness in honor of MLK Classic Weekend. We also want to reiterate the importance of community engagement, grassroots advocacy associated with the RRMM report this evening. Come on out and join us at our parent advisory meeting that is open to all community members. We will be moving it from the library here at the middle school into the auditorium because we are positively hoping to have large audience numbers. So please come out and join us 5 o'clock on the 27th. And at this point, I will yield the floor with one additional closing comment. If you have a rising preschooler, preschool applications open in February. Get those in quickly so that the federal programs team can evaluate your status and let you know if your child is able to gain access to pre-K. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the closed session period of our meeting. I need a motion to move to enter into closed session for the superintendent's personnel agenda for the discussion of appointments, resignations, terminations, retirements, position changes, step change and substitutes as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. We would go into closed session. Will the clerk call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
We are now in closed.
Don't forget to use your mics, please.
Been moved and seconded as we return from closed session. How do you vote, Mr. Shawn?
Aye.
Ms. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Robbins-Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, motion carries. All right, the approval of certification from closed session. Shawn, do you?
I certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
And I so certify as well. Been moved and probably seconded we approve the personnel agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and probably seconded we approve the personnel agenda as presented. Mr. Shawn?
Aye.
Ms. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Robbins-Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Any school board matters of interest? I guess not. That sounds good. Okay, move to adjourn?
So moved.